So I'm sorry to call this order and stop the fun conversation, but thank you so much. And so it's time for we're going to call this meeting of the Montmartre School Board's Order. Um, I would open this up for public input. And seeing no public input at this time, um, we will go ahead and move into our consent agenda. Um, so I'm wondering if any board member has anything that they would like to discuss before we accept the consent agenda items. Um, I know that we've got the board goals in there, everybody had a chance to review those. Um, the draft survey was also in there, um, which I really appreciate the work that you did on that, Kristin, thank you. Uh, one thing that I noticed is that we had a couple of options in there, so, um, if I were to vote for an option, um, on the first question, I think I would choose option one. Um, was that your intention to like to talk about?
Yeah.
Which options or?
Yeah, and if anyone, if we have to discuss them, otherwise, but yeah. If you don't want to respond now.
Yeah, that's totally fine. Yeah, I think option one gives us a little bit more information.
Yeah.
Um, and then the only other thing that I saw in there that I wondered about, you know, I talked about it briefly, is that, um, the Facebook page dedicated to Montmartre School Board, like there's a lot of logistics of that, and if we might just make that a little bit more broad, so that it might be, you know, putting an update on the SAU, um, Facebook page or something like that, just so that we don't commit to something that we may not be able to do that way.
Yeah.
I don't know that, but. You know, anyone else have input for Kristin on the survey?
So for the survey, um, we'll need to get that paid for and processed, so just wondering who who's in charge and who wants to work and need to get.
The poster for the?
Yeah.
Right, oh, yeah, and also, I don't know, and I, I think we, I can just write your, your particular.
Oh, okay. So you weren't talking about Christine about it?
No, 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 not yet, but, um, for, I mean, an image, do you have any good quality images of the school anywhere?
We only have our mobile.
Yeah.
Um, I, I mean, we could certainly send someone up there to.
No. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I can find one.
Yeah, that's a side of our conversation, but I can, um, I can make the postcard and then figure out who I need to speak to, to get that process and send out. Um, do you want me to check back with you?
Yeah, because we want to get a P O in for that, so we can get it done for this year.
Okay.
We might have to, I'm not sure which line, which account line will come out of, so. Um, do you have an estimate by any chance, or no?
I do not.
Okay. All right.
But I will.
Yeah, so we can, we'll get it figured out.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not super expensive.
Probably not, it's expensive, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks everyone for that. Um, do we have any questions for Roger on the facilities report? Um, any issues with the, um, the spring N W E A, N W E A report? Are we a little bit, a little bit under our target group? Thoughts on that? We were a little bit, um, so interesting, we were piloting a, you know, two different math programs this year, so, again, a lot of times we'll see an implementation dip, so something for us to monitor next year. Um, the other thing we were talking about, neither of the programs brings students above standard to like the next grade level, because the, the, um, the, the programs are really built off of those grade level standards, so one of the pieces which, I think our, oh, our implementation poster is still on the wall, so the green poster was, if we implemented bridges, what would we actually need to do? Um, and one of the pieces there is really that, um, uh, piece that's in there somewhere about, um, assessments, limited opportunities to achieve four, so we want to be really thoughtful in how we help students go above and beyond. The teachers actually felt that this was reflective of them intentionally not introducing a grade level concept if students aren't quite ready for that grade level concept, so how do we provide the right level of measurement to our students, so I think, uh, in math, it's certainly a piece in transitioning to a new program. That piece, I, I'm feeling confident in the mathematical thinkers we're developing this year, we've been, we're being really close to with teachers, and teachers are feeling confident, and I think it's not shown here because of just two different programs and, um, the attention to grade level only, so we weren't seeing growth above. And then in English Language Arts, um, you know, one of the challenges this year certainly is that second grade group. Um, we had, um, across our SAU, we feel that was our grade level that's been most impacted due to COVID, there were students who left us, um, you know, two thirds of the way through kindergarten. And, uh, coming back first grade experience, just not your, uh, you know, uh, we've, uh, different pieces in place last year, I think, um, a, a little bit more of a challenge for some of our, our first graders last year, and then transitioning to second grade, even our MTS group. Um, so something to keep an eye on, uh, you know, the teachers certainly reported that they need growth this year, uh, and that especially around the social emotional learning around, um, just being students, so I think some of the academics might be trailing, whereas as soon as they're feeling more like students, which we think we've gotten them to a really good place this year, we think that those academics will follow, so we've been closely monitoring that group, but it's the group we are most concerned about.
Yeah, one of, one of the conversations we've been having, um, I've talked about our MTSS process, which is, um, the wraparound that, the process wrapping around individual students and, um, providing the supports that they need, each student needs. And really, um, you know, this is sort of that thirty thousand foot, but really when we drill into individual students and, and their growth and their challenges or what have you, really providing interventions that are, that are fit to them. So those conversations are happening. Um, I, I, I met with a couple of our interventions today and, um, talked about how next fall, we want to hit the ground right. We don't want to take five weeks to get things organized, we want to have everything ready to go in the fall, uh, the students into it too, um, to provide those interventions right off the bat, provide those supports right off the bat. So, um, in areas like, you know, reading and math, it, it, it takes one student who falls pretty well below to bring the, the group down, uh, when our numbers are smaller statistically. Um, and so we're looking at, at some of that on an, on an individual student basis. And likewise, you know, we have, uh, we've looked just preliminarily in our SAS scores, state scores, uh, that are, that are starting to trickle out, and, uh, and we're seeing some, some real strong, sort of to Christine's point, some real strong performance, there in grades three through six, um, that presents different challenges around enrichment, providing resources, and things like that, so, I, I can't stress enough the MTSS process and, and really analyzing each student and what they need, and, uh, and then start the year, hit the ground running with interventions if, if they need those.
Great, thank you. Any questions for?
I don't want to ask too much, but I have one more question, so the time for kind of getting into the C program and implementation is the, uh, a real good teaching of category level. Is that a product of the new implementation and if less are comfortable with new curriculum, they'll be able to teach about, or is that because just the way a curriculum is designed?
Both. So it's designed that way, but once we're able to implement, we'll look at how we can, uh, provide those enrichment opportunities for students, because we isn't, you know, a, a district or SAU feels strongly about that, a lot of districts just want to meet those grade level standards, we want to be able to go above and beyond. The challenge is, um, when we were doing it kind of piecemeal, we felt a little messy, so starting with a program that meets the standard, then we can look at what that looks like to go above and beyond. So I, I definitely think we'll be working towards that and, and working on those pieces next year.
Also, when we talk about differentiation, we're not always talking about acceleration, we're not always talking about a first grader doing second grade math, it's the complexity and, and, uh, providing that differentiation or complexity. And so, um, I think bridges does provide resources to, to dig deeper and provide more complex problems. We'll know more as we get into that this summer, you know, how to apply that and, and how to adjust our instruction around, uh, that group of students and their use at grade levels.
Great, thank you. Um, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items one through seven? Do you have a second? Um, any further discussion? Hearing none on paper? Thank you. And we're up to our unexpendable fund balance and end of the year project, so I will turn this over to Stacy to raise some guidance.
Yes, thank you, so we should have in your packet both the, um, projections for the assigned fund balance as well as a project list for consideration, so we'll talk about the, uh, fund, fund, fund balance first. Just a few things to note, uh, that changed from last month, the, um, Health Trust return of surplus has now been moved down to the expenditure line, and that's isolated in, um, the function code twenty nine hundred salaries and benefits pool, so that was about ten thousand last month, and now it's been increased by the almost thirty seven thousand surplus, so it's at forty seven one. Uh, and then the other change here is a slight adjustment in regular ed, so what happens is we get towards the end of the year, we're able to release, uh, some compromises, we feel that won't be decided by the end of the year. So, your total in revenues, um, unsigned is thirty six two, and your total in expenditures unassigned is three ninety six one, for total of four thirty two three. I also added at the bottom, just for your, uh, reference, a chart that shows the expenditures and revenues broken out as well as the, uh, capital reserve, the fifty thousand that was approved in March. So that you can see, you would, you, you would definitely use the, um, the revenues for that, but in order to fully fund that, you would need to use thirteen thousand eight hundred from the expenditures. In addition, I made the assumption, um, that you would want to return the Health Trust surplus, you certainly don't have to, but typically that is, um, what is done. So that leaves you a balance available of three hundred forty five thousand five hundred seventeen dollars for projects. So, any questions on that, and then we can move to the projects? And answer any questions? Okay. So, moving to the projects. I do have Roger here, we have Brian here, um, to answer any specific facilities or technology questions. Um, I did meet with, um, Crystal, so if you have specific questions on food service, and then Tom can answer specific questions on special requests. But what we did is we grouped these by those four different categories, facilities, technology, food service, and special requests, specials requests, and ranked them in order, um, of priority. And you'll see the, the very first item in facilities is the siding repairs that the board already approved last month. So with that, I guess it's really up to you all to discuss and make some, uh, ask those questions, and then make final determinations for us to move forward, we'll need to, uh, go into, um, an agreement with vendors and contractors before the end of the month in order to have it, have us be able to, um, use these out of the assigned fund balance expenditure line.
Um, I have one quick question about that outdoor shed with the grounds equipment. Is that, is that replacing the one that's out the back right now?
It is. Not the one in the back, the one on the side next to the dumpsters.
Yeah, that one.
Yes.
That's the one.
There is one in the back, it holds the generator.
Okay, yeah, not, I didn't mean that one, I meant the one on the side, and by the bird garden.
Exactly.
Okay. Listen, I know Pink, that costed sense and recommendations, um, to me, and I agree to Sarah, I wasn't sure if they went to the whole board, but, okay, good.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
I have a, a question that may require a discussion further, but we had, talking about like the building security. Should we also have a discussion about that at some point in context, also these recommendations, like charter needs, that and?
So, just going into security discussion, I asked to push it off to the next day, because that, I think we need to have a little bit more time to do that, and I think the better place to do that is in the actual building, so if we need to see and discuss in context, it makes a little bit more sense. I think Roger confirmed that the things that are on here with like the electronic store access, that that's addressing a need that has already been identified. Um, I don't think there's anything additional you would add to the list right now.
Not at this time.
Yeah, and, and I feel very comfortable among the village school safety and security design as it was, and as I understand when there was a tragedy in our town several years ago, that there was a big push at that time to make some changes, and those have been in place ever since, so I'm glad you guys wanted the discussion, um, but there's, we have nothing else besides what we've asked for and what we feel we need right now.
So nothing critical that we could add?
Well, and, uh, Tom, Christine, Roger.
Yeah, I feel very comfortable where we're at with village school myself as well.
Yeah, right, yeah, we, we've been meeting, um, so, we had a, a study done by the, um, Homeland Security Department Department, they brought back, um, a report with some recommendations, uh, that I can share with the board. Um, we've met with police and fire, reviewed that, met with, um, the K D A president, um, our office staff, facilities, gone through that, and, uh, they were very, um, impressed actually with a lot of the protocols we have in place, with radios, with cameras, with the, the door entrance area, um, you know, there were some things we had to tweak, some things here and there, but nothing significant. So, overall, I think the protocols, the, the, the building is, is in a good place, um, in terms of that, you know, there's, there's some little things again that we, we can look at and continue to improve on, but, um, by and large, it was, it was, uh, it was a very positive, uh, report, and sort of reassuring, you know, particularly in the time we're in, so, yeah.
I didn't need to ask.
Yeah.
Bookmark.
For sure, yeah.
Absolutely. Um, were there any line items that anyone felt strongly not to move forward with? No, I mean, I, you know, I wondered a little bit about the snowshoes and the banners, if that might be something that could be done either through, uh, P T A contribution, like we want to say that we're funding those now or just pulled off on that, I think we had talked about an alternative for those potentially. Same thing with the cushions for the library seating, we needed to take a few things off, that those might be the three that I would say we could hold on, but the rest of them all seem like necessary building repairs, necessary upgrades, um, you know, the E D ramp makes sense to do. The laptops certainly, uh, the iPads sounds like were a bit of an issue, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we'll, just for note with that, uh, the laptops were, those were things that we were pulled out, we're trying to get an aging side of things for them all, we're looking at a lot of them, and most of the schools are on a five to six year more age limit, we're seeing a lot of disrepair, things like that happening to them, they need the replacement there, and the iPads are in the same boat with that, there was, they can no longer be updated to newer versions of I O S to be able to support the N I O testing or, really any other sort of standardized testing itself that's used on most of the issues for the N W A, but, um, but yeah, they're, they're functioning to a degree, but not enough for we can really securely utilize them for that.
And, and though, if you remember, um, the laptops were pulled out of the budget in hopes of being able to fund from assigned fund balance. Right, and, yeah, I mean, they've been on our radar for sure, so it's not like we're not there.
So you're saying the laptops now currently, their average age is about five to six years, or you replace them every five to six years?
Well, so the initial plan would, uh, would be to get us to a point where on like a, a constant turnover every four to five years. Um, right now, there hasn't been any sort of, um, ability to do that for, like, consistent at a grade level, being able to introduce a new level for, you know, stack of laptops for a new grade every time you kind of cycle through them. Um, so this, uh, twenty thousand would be put towards being able to remove the ones that are in the building that are of that five, six, or more age already, and to kind of get them back onto, uh, a cycle of, of replacement there.
Yeah, specifically, so. You started, you classified them three to five years.
Yeah.
So, five to six years to me.
Yeah.
And when I look at some of that stuff, to me, that's like a creative tour, that's an ongoing capital. Right, me, this is some of the stuff I brought up, the laptop, why it showed up in the U F B, and I get it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's compromise, we need to have it, at the end of the day, this is ongoing stuff, I shouldn't see any of this stuff on U F B, like I have issues with like the laptops, iPads for me, unless they're new, but like.
They should be a third record on the budget.
That's, that's the cycle that it needs to be on, so this thing where we're pulling them off, and when we, it has, we need to set up a reserve for this stuff, and this is stuff that we're constantly cycling through, so.
Sure.
That's the issues I have a lot of this.
We all agree, we did, and I can't even do a good job of budgeting our technology for the last couple of years. We kind of have it, we're doing a lot of this out of the U F B, but I agree with you, I think we need to be more.
Yeah.
In an effort to keep the, the budget difference into the fall so close, that's been our strategy the last four or five years, have almost no difference budget in the fall. The way we've done that is by using U F B to fund, which really are ongoing capital items.
And in order to just keep that sign weight stable, because you don't have like these, oh, now we gotta replace, like what we had with the siding, and oh, that's a twenty one thousand dollar expense goal. To me, that stuff should, yeah, now it's a big hit because you waited so long, but I get it, I get it, I'm not faulting anybody, it's just one of those things, I think you need to do a better job of it.
Sure.
But thank you.
Isn't this, so here's something that I know anecdotally it works from a customer perspective, so maybe doesn't resist this, but Apple is known for like stopping updating devices, and is that something that we have to use Apple products or are they compatible with N I O? Is that something that shifting to a different device product line would not have us in that situation?
Um, it's not specifically needing to use, like we use N W A products on the laptops and things like that, but for the grade levels that the iPads are used on, which are our first graders, the app itself is more user friendly for them not having gotten into that typing platform and using mice and all that type of stuff to do, so the platform of being able to push the buttons and just, you know, right on the screen, um, is more user friendly for that age range group form. And, in general, um, yes, they do sort of end their end of life, it's not a, it's not a very short end of life for them, you can go all the way back, and these are, we're talking about iPads that were purchased back in two thousand fifteen, like they're like old, things that are just, yeah, like first, and it's like a generation of, of certain ones in itself, that are again, still functioning for a certain level of apps and things like that, but nothing that is beyond what we would see today and stuff like that, so.
Thank you. Okay, I hate to truncate the discussion here, but we are running on a positive time, because we've got a little question today. Thoughts on holding on the banners and snowshoes, everyone kind of on board with that, anything else that you'd want to hold on, or are we comfortable saying we'd like to move forward with the rest? Comfortable?
Yeah.
George?
Yeah, I mean, there was a couple things that said, yeah, we absolutely need to do, um.
And I think some of the quotes came in a little bit lower than what's on the, um, projected proposed costs, so I think there's a little bit of savings there as well. Um, some of the ones at the top that have new quotes. I know they were, yeah, they came in a little bit lower, so, well, one, yeah, several are quite a bit lower, which is nice, but, so I think there's a little wiggle room there.
Okay, so we're saying, I guess, we're going to be moving on with the exception of the two items you brought up.
Yeah.
So, I'm fine with, um.
You're good with that, would you like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to support the U F B minus the, uh, two items, uh, which were the, uh, the snowshoes that you brought up and the banners as well.
Thank you, do I have a second for that?
You provided a, a, a up two dollar amount in that question, right?
Yeah, so I, I did the math. Yeah, so, say it round to two forty two.
Yeah.
It'll be up to that amount, and then obviously, as, you know, things come in less, we would not.
So I authorize my motion, is I authorize up to two hundred and forty two thousand dollars to be spent out of the U F B.
One second, any discussion? Hearing none on paper?
I will say that is very refreshing, because when we had this conversation, it was like I had my boxing gloves on. It was really painful.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Six thirty tonight, so.
No, 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 good, no good.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much for the prep. Thank you very much, all of the information really helped us to make informed decisions, appreciate that. Um, okay, we are up to our committee's discussion on the middle school study committee. Um, kind of circles us back around to the, um, board goals and the draft survey. Um, I think the information that we have in the draft survey will help to inform whatever that committee, um, you know, happens. I think we're all in agreement that we need to move forward with this study committee, so, um, you know, one of the logical next steps would be trying to come up with, um, you know, wording around recommissioning that committee. Are we okay if I work on that and, um, you know, send something out to the board, and then we can kind of put that out um, next month, hopefully to try and get some interest and, and see where we're at, and it would then, you know, correspond with getting the information back from that survey, so that committee can hit the ground running.
Hopefully, yeah, we should also discuss how long we'll be trying to solicit from. We may be sending this out when school's out, so parents aren't going to be checking email and announcements, like that timing's a little rough. Um, so that's something I think about.
True. Thoughts on that?
It, we can always update, I can always update data, we can revise, like when the school year starts, maybe send out a couple different rounds, so we can always keep updating responses, but the committee will work hard for us for a little while.
Okay. I mean, my hope would be that, that, um, you know, when we meet in August, that we may be able to have some direction with that, um, with the middle school study committee and S S C, um, to be able to start the year, giving them some momentum. So is that timeframe deal okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, do we need any further discussion on that, or you okay if I come up with some stuff, I'll put it on the travel card, and then we'll be able to talk about it? Any other perspective, I mean, I'm happy to hear from. Okay, thank you. Looks like we are up to our resignations and nominations.
Yes, we are, so. Here. We have the following, so there is a one nomination and two resignations. Two resignations are, uh, are both received, um, we understand both of them, they are from Catherine Montopolo, did I say that right? The Spanish teacher, um, and Kira Bell, one of our classroom teachers. So we recommend you accept both those resignations, and we have a nomination, uh, for Karen Rummel to be a point four school psych, with a salary of thirty one thousand forty six dollars.
She is the Karen Rummel, who used to work for the S A U, she was, she retired, and she was thrilled to come back and are part-time.
Retirement didn't take.
And maybe she's thrilled to get somewhat experienced, and so is Tom, the rapport manager, but the whole team at our work is excited. Any questions? Comments?
Something we need to learn from, from the books or resigning that we could have evolved in the future, or any should just updated?
Well, the Spanish, I mean, it's, it's a problem that we tend to have because of the nature of the, of the position, it's not full-time.
Right.
So that's unfortunate, but it's our unfortunate reality, um, and then it looked like, um, like Kira Bell is, we will be locating. Yeah, that is a reluctant acceptance.
And not community member.
Yeah. Um, and the, the Spanish position is also challenging, you're a single tenant, so you're the only Spanish teacher in the school, in the district. As far as the S A U, you can collaborate, but the, that's, you know, uh, at middle school, so it, it doesn't even translate to K group five, it starts in sixth grade, so you don't really have a partner in the S A U, so that is also a challenge to the position. So it's all stuff that is not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I believe we need a motion to accept the two resignations and the nomination. Thank you, and we're accepting the nomination of Karen Rummel at thirty one zero forty six, is that what you're saying?
There's it.
That nomination, what was it, thirty one?
Thirty one, zero forty six, zero forty six, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, any comment? Okay, on paper?
So one for Tom.
Certainly what happens in the U F B.
It's a dumb question. It's really to provide insightful to the board, it turns tangible. We can attempt. If we can move back to work.
Yeah, can we make her come back?
She would have heard that, if she ever comes back, or, so she can sound. We kept that open, she's a very sharp teacher, yes, she is, so we're sad, it's really sorry. So when we went to that, I think that part of the service, of course. But, you know, we didn't, I actually met with the Spanish teacher for probably thirty or forty minutes, when she shared with me that she was going to be resigning, and, um, we remember Tom wasn't hired yet, and we hired Catherine, so I was kind of her point of connection at Montmartre, and so I feel I really almost had that exit interview with her, um, and a lot of what I shared this evening, um, is, were really her reasons, um, uh, for, you know, it was her first time teaching ever, and she's, um, moving out to a private school, and just a very different environment, um, than, you know, really those, the same reasons, um, the part-time nature.
So it's more informal, it's nothing that we have as part of our.
Um, and I know Steve has started doing exit interviews on a more formal basis. Um, and I know Steve has started doing exit interviews on a more formal basis, um, and, uh, you know, Kira was really relocating, uh, but that's something, you know, Steve and I can certainly look at next year, um, kind of coming together and formalizing. And perhaps we can also talk about this again in our next meeting. I'm so sorry, we do have a member that needs to go. I believe we've already kind of touched on the math update, Christine, sort of in our, yeah, just anybody have any quick questions for Christine or we?
I would, but I.
You have to go, I know. So I just want to thank everyone for their, um, time tonight and also wanted to thank Superintendent Steele. Uh, this is his last meeting with us, so.
I don't cry. Thank you. We appreciate you.
As well as well, so, um, there is, uh, you guys act as a model of force rewards all over in the way you, uh, set high standards, um, make clear expectations and trust us to execute according to your wishes. And the result of that, you're starting, you're just starting to see the fruits of that leadership on all of your parts in your school, which is becoming the model elementary school in the state of New Hampshire and the country itself. So thank you for the trust you place to me, it is truly an honor, thank you.
And now, we have another change. I'm still taking the motion to adjourn, we're leaving at 6:02 on the dot. The next.
Hey, I was with G.